Glad you read it because it's Saturday. Nobody reads papers.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am David Vitale, President of the Chicago Board of Education. On behalf of my fellow board members, I welcome you to today's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is May 28, 2014, and we are holding this month's meeting here at the Board Chambers at 125 South Clark. We'll follow our traditional order this morning. So, Madam Secretary, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the regular meeting of Wednesday, May 28th, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Hines?
Yes.
Vice President Reese?
Yes.
Board Member Zap?
Present.
Dr. Escoitia?
Present.
Board Member Quazo?
Here.
President Vitale?
Here.
Six members present. There is a quorum. I would also like to recognize Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, our Chief Executive Officer, Mr. James Bebley, our General Counsel, Ashley Gordon, our Honorary Student Board Member, and our Shadow Student this month, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Cadet Gamaliel Duran. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. In fact, we will begin, as usual, with an introduction of our Shadow Student for this month. Ashley, would you please make the introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President. This month, we have Gamaliel Duran, a junior cadet major from Marine Math and Science Academy. Gamaliel has held various leadership roles, including Company First Sergeant, Battalion Sergeant Major, and Battalion Executive Officer. After graduation, Gamaliel plans to enlist in the United States Marine Corps.
Gamaliel and I had a chance to talk briefly this morning. It was a big day for him. He was telling me because of the graduating senior class, he actually had to step up and be the leader of the cadet corps this morning. So, it's a real honor for him to provide that kind of leadership at his school. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Good morning, everyone. I would like to thank the board members for giving me the opportunity to attend today's board meeting. I'd also like to thank my principal and chaperone for showing interest in me, and so I could be here today. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and welcome again, and good luck in your senior year. So, now for honoring excellence. We start with the most important excellence we can honor this morning, and that's for Ashley. Ashley, as you know, has been our Honorary Student member this year, and this is her last board meeting before she graduated. She'll be graduating from DeVry Advantage Academy High School in a couple of weeks. And I want to take this opportunity, Ashley, to say thank you. You've been a dedicated student board member and have provided outstanding service and input to us and to the Student Advisory Council that Barbara set up that you are sitting on. We want to wish you success as you attend the University of Illinois Chicago to study business administration. And we know you'll be successful in your future endeavors, so please keep up the good work and continue to speak up for the voice of student government. We will have a plaque for you with a resolution that is included in our agenda and a small gift for you to remember your year with us here. Stella, do you want to?
I really appreciate it. I really enjoyed my time here on the board, and I can really say that I'm really going to miss coming to the meetings every month and learning more about our school system.
Thank you, Ashley, and thanks again. Next, we'd like to congratulate the culinary students from Chicago Vocational Career Academy. Barbara, I hear we have some extraordinary talent with us here today. Would you care to tell us about it?
Yes, we do. Our Chicago Public Schools students achieve extraordinarily every day, inside and outside of the classroom. And this month, it is my privilege to recognize the team of students who won first place in the Healthy Schools Campaign Cooking Up Challenge competition. The Cooking Up Challenge competition was launched in 2007, and the intent of the competition is to engage student chefs to create great tasting lunches that meet nutrition standards on a tight budget, using only ingredients commonly available for school food services. Chicago Vocational Career Academy was among the 13 Chicago Public Schools that competed last November. The world-class student chefs from Chicago Vocational Career Academy, Elira, I'm going to, I don't want to mess up your name, Ms. Campbell? How do you say your first name?
Elira.
Elira Campbell. Lena Jones?
Lina Jones.
Lina Jones. Last name Kelly?
Shalon.
Shalon Kelly. And Mallory Montgomery? Okay. Demonstrated their culinary talents and creativity by creating healthy nutritious meals for their classmates and the Cooking Up Judge, Cooking Up Change judges, including some of Chicago's top chefs. The team's winning dish of curry chicken, Caribbean garden salad, and plantains was served in schools across the city last February. And on June 9th, the CVCA team will travel to Washington, D.C. to compete against teams from across the country in the Cooking Up Change National Finals at the U.S. Department of Education. On behalf of the Chicago Public Schools, we congratulate you on this incredible accomplishment and wish you the best of luck in Washington in June. If any of you would like to say, have a few words?
As you all know, we are the award-winning teams, and we wanted to try something different in the lunchroom. We used to all having the same food, like chicken sandwich and stuff, and we would like to see something more spicy to the lunchroom. So, that's when we came up with the curry chicken, because it looked a little spice to it. We always had baked chicken, so we wanted to have something else. So, we tried some different seasonings, and we came up with the Jamaican cuisine.
Cool.
Great.
Excellent.
So, we're looking forward to lunch. They actually are going to prepare lunch for us today, and we're excited about the opportunity to take advantage of your talent over lunch today. We really appreciate your willingness to do that. And I know on behalf of the board, we want to wish you the best in the Nationals. We're sure you'll represent us well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On a more somber note, I'd like to recognize the extraordinary contributions of Lenora Draper, a Senior Grants Analyst working with Title I Programs in the Office of Grant-Funded Programs, who recently passed away. Barbara, would you please provide the details of this?
Yes, Mr. President. Last month, Chicago lost a true champion for children to a senseless, unconscionable act of violence. Lenora Draper was, by all accounts, a hero. She was an exemplary human being. She dedicated her personal and professional life to helping others and creating a bright future for all people in this city that she loved. I actually knew Lenora as a warm soul, a smiling face, and an essential member of the Chicago Public School community. Lenora's memory will remain an animated spirit and guiding force for all of us as we move forward with fulfilling a mission that was so close to her heart, and that is really creating a better, safer tomorrow for the children of Chicago. In the short time since she was taken from us, I have had the privilege of getting to know her family. They are decent, honorable, and admirable. Lee's family and friends are here with us today. Jason, her husband, Brandon, her brother-in-law, Ms. Reynolds, Virginia Reynolds, Ms. Reynolds, her mother-in-law, Ronald Draper, her father-in-law, and Jocelyn Adams, her friend, and so many other friends, as you can see, from the department where Lenora worked. As much as we will miss Lee as a friend and a colleague and a true champion here at Chicago Public Schools, we know our loss is nothing compared to her family's. To the entire Draper family, you remain in our thoughts and our prayers. And this morning, the Chicago Board of Education resolves to honor Lee's memory and her remarkable inspirational work on behalf of Chicago's next generation. Thank you so very much for joining us this morning. Ms. Reynolds or Mr. Reynolds? Any members of the family that might want to speak?
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. On behalf of Jason and all of our family, both here in Chicago and also in Houston, who could not be here today, Lee was a native of Houston. I'd like to greatly thank the full board for appreciating Lee and with this resolution and remembering her and her efforts during the short time she had a chance to work for the board. It's been very gratifying to know that so many individuals had appreciated her being here in her life, and we certainly thank you for remembering us and, of course, remembering Lee.
Ms. Reynolds?
Brandon.
Jason or Brandon? Thank you very, very much.
So, on behalf of the board too as well, we do want to express our sincere sympathies for this tragic situation. As Barbara pointed out, we will pass a resolution today, which will be, I think it's just been handed to you. And if I might, just a couple of words from that resolution that whereas Lenora Draper was hired as a Business Service Analyst in the Office of Specialized Services for the Chicago Public Schools in 2008 and committed to serve the students and schools of Chicago, and most recently as a Senior Grants Analyst. And then, we actually detail her contributions to the system in several paragraphs and the work that she did. And therefore, be it resolved that we, the President and members of the Board of Education of the City of Chicago, gathered here this 28th day of May, 2014, do hereby extend to the family of Lenora Draper our thanks for her remarkable service and offer our most sincere gratitude for her contributions to the Chicago Public Schools and the children of the City of Chicago. Thank you very much for coming down and allowing us to honor Lenora this way. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting. Barbara?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last month, when the University of Chicago's Consortium on Chicago School Research issued their reports highlighting the district's success on improving on-track graduation rates, the two demographic groups within CPS that saw the largest academic gains were African-American and Latino male students. Over the course of the last eight years, the number of African-American male CPS students on track to graduate increased by 28.3 percent. The number of Latino male students on track to graduate went up by 25.3 percent. The pace of this progress is unprecedented. But in spite of these meaningful consequential gains, gaps in the achievement remain. In response to the achievement gap that exists in school systems across the country, the White House and the U.S. Department of Education are partnering with the Council of Greater City Schools to implement what is being called the Males of Color Initiative. The President and the Secretary of Education have asked school districts to join in the call to action by pledging to strengthen our collective efforts to enable males of color in our schools to reach their potential. This pledge is aligned with our vision for every Chicago Public School student in every neighborhood to be engaged in a rigorous, well-rounded, powerful instructional program and to graduate our students prepared for success in college, career, and life. On behalf of Chicago's next generation, I propose that the Chicago Public Schools respond to the request by the President and the Secretary of Education and adopt the pledge to commit to improving the outcomes for these students through a resolution which will be considered by the board later this evening.
That resolution is on our agenda today.
Great. When I began this work here at the Chicago Public Schools, I created the Office of Strategic School Support Services, known as OS4. The creation of the office was very, very specific, and that was to provide neighborhood schools with the comprehensive targeted supports and resources necessary to improve student achievement. Today, OS4 is providing support for 36 CPS neighborhood schools, including 21 elementary and 15 secondary schools. While whole-school improvement takes time, we have already seen meaningful early indicators of progress. The average on-track rate for students in grades three through eight at OS4 schools rose by 4 percent in just the first semester. NWEA reading scores are on the rise at every single OS4 elementary school, and NWEA math scores are increasing in 18 of the 21 OS4 schools. NWEA, the Northwest Evaluation Association, develops and delivers a nationally-normed, Common Core-aligned test to students in CPS and across this country. The OS4 team, under the leadership of Ms. Tracy Martin Thompson, has been proactively identifying and addressing school needs, improving leadership capacity to support improvements in teaching and learning, and creating literacy instructional programs for each school, and more importantly, to work with each school to provide the academic and social-emotional supports for learning that our students need. At this time, I would like to introduce Chief Officer for Strategic School Support, Tracy Martin Thompson, to further update the board on the progress OS4 has made and where they are headed as we move toward the conclusion of this school year. Ms. Martin?
Good morning, President Vitale, members of the board, and CEO Bird Bennett. As you're aware, the Office of Strategic School Support Services, also known as OS4, was created by the CEO to provide some of our highest-need neighborhood schools the supports and services required to improve and sustain student achievement. Today, I would like to provide you an overview of the services and supports we provided these schools over the course of the year and the progress that they've made thus far. Currently, our office is responsible for supporting 36 schools, 21 elementary, and 15 high schools. In addition, our office is responsible for managing and monitoring the implementation of the School Improvement Grant Program. On Slide number three, you see a list of the schools that OS4 is responsible for supporting. On the left side of that table, you see a list of the 15 high schools inherited by our office. All of these schools receive Federal School Improvement Grant or SIG funds. Schools that are eligible to apply for SIG funds are identified by the State Department of Education. Through a highly competitive application process, the district applies on behalf of interested eligible schools to the state for these grant funds. Schools can receive anywhere between $50,000 up to $2 million a year for a period of three years. As a requirement of the School Improvement Grant Program, schools must agree to work with a state-approved external lead partner provider, whose primary responsibility is to provide the support of school needs in order to successfully implement all components of their school improvement grant plan. Notice that the schools on that side are grouped by cohort. At the end of this current school year, the grant period will conclude for Cohort II schools. We are currently working with these schools to develop sustainability plans. On the right side of the table, if you can go back, on the right side of the table, you see a list of our reinvestment schools. These schools do not receive school improvement grant funds. They include traditional neighborhood schools, 21 elementary, and one high school, all selected to receive support through OS4. You might recall that reinvestment schools were identified through a review and selection process that involved eliciting the input and recommendations from the Office of Network Support and network chiefs, with final decisions made by the CEO. Once schools were identified, we invited the principal, LSC chair, and union delegate from each school to attend an informational dinner meeting in which we shared information about OS4 and the support and resources they would receive should they opt to partner with our office. Following that meeting, each school team was afforded the opportunity to reflect upon what they learned and make a determination as to whether or not joining OS4 was the right decision for them. We stressed to all of them that being a part of OS4 was not a mandate but a choice. We explained that in order for their schools to engage in a successful transformation effort, their school communities have to make a conscious choice to fully commit and be willing partners in this work. And as you're aware, none of our schools chose to opt out. We plan to reconvene the same group for an end-of-year dinner meeting to celebrate their successes and learn from them what worked well and also in what areas we need to improve so we can better support the schools moving forward. Slides numbers four and five include an overview of the services and supports we provided schools. I'd like to take a moment now to just highlight just a few of the key initiatives we implemented this year. First, I want to talk a bit about the school diagnostic review process. In order to ensure we were able to develop and implement a plan of support based upon the identified needs of each school, all OS4 schools participated in a school diagnostic review process. The process involved an examination of the areas of strength and areas of growth for each school in relation to a set of performance indicators that define effective schools. As a part of the SDR process, a team of reviewers consisting of central office staff, CPS principals, and members of the school community conducted onsite school visits in which they collected essential evidence to support the development of an appropriate plan of support for each school. This process provided valuable information for OS4 that directed our decisions and changes in how we support it and will continue to support these schools in the future. In addition, it also served as a valuable opportunity to engage each school community in a process of self-reflection and learning. In terms of the professional development, a key focus of our work this year centered around building the capacity of our teachers and leaders to support improvements in teaching and learning. We focus heavily on assisting our principals and teachers in deepening their knowledge of the English Language Arts Common Core State Standards and developing the skills required to implement the prescribed instructional shifts. To support our principals and teachers in this effort, all OS4 principals and reinvestment school teachers, including teachers of diverse learners and English learners, participated in a series of professional development sessions. In addition, each school was assigned a leadership and instructional coaches, who were tasked with supporting teachers and principals in the implementation of this work. We also provided teachers instructional materials and tools to support them in making critical changes in their instructional practice. Next year, we will continue to support them in further developing their knowledge and skills as it relates to the English Language Arts Common Core State Standards, but we will also expand this support to include mathematics. Next slide, please. No, went back. I'm sorry. In addition to the academic-related investments made, all OS4 reinvestment schools were the recipients of capital improvements as well. Based upon an assessment of individual school needs, some of the capital improvements included IT infrastructure and equipment upgrades, which included iPads or laptops, depending on the school requests or individual needs, the installation of AC window units, and school-specific interior improvements. Last slide. As you can see, we've provided a great deal of support for our schools. However, we recognize the importance of taking a step back and questioning, is all of this truly working? And are we seeing changes in instructional practice that will improve student learning? So, in order to evaluate the impact of the supports we provided our schools, we decided to conduct a middle-of-the-year performance review in which we analyzed some key performance measures to determine how the schools performed at the end of Semester One last year in these areas compared to the end of Semester One this year. So, first, we looked at student and freshman on-track data, and we found that the average on-track rate for our third through eighth graders at OS4 schools was 54.1 percent at the end of Semester One this year compared to 50.1 percent at the end of Semester One last year. Overall, 13 OS4 elementary schools and eight of our high schools improved their Semester One on-track rates this year as compared to last. We also took a look at how students perform on the middle-of-the-year NWA MAP, or Measures of Academic Progress Assessment. And as you're aware, this is a nationally-normed computer-adaptive formative assessment. And we found that all 21 of our OS4 elementary schools increased their reading RIT scores at the end of Semester One this year compared to last, ranging from a 3.2 all the way to a 13.9 point increase. In addition, as the CEO stated, 18 of our OS4 elementary schools also improved their math RIT scores. We are confident that our end-of-the-year report will mirror the results shown here. Also, I'd like to note, should board members desire, I can provide individual school data upon request. I just also want to note the fact that due to the inconsistent assessments at the high school level, we were unable to compare the high school assessments in the same manner as we did for the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Questions for?
I do. I do have a question. Thank you, Tracy. You know, I support this effort, wholeheartedly, to support neighborhood and community schools. But I also have a couple of questions. Do we see OS4 as a preventive tool for the turnaround process? Or do we see this as an internal mechanism ourselves to turn around schools as we evolve with OS4?
OS4 is definitely not a turnaround mechanism. It is a transformation effort. We work with the principal and teachers and staff members who are there. We do not remove the teachers. We do not remove the principal. We try to work with capacity building to help them to improve and move forward in that effort.
So, it could be a preventive approach as you support them so that those schools make progress?
Yes.
Thank you.
And what's the concept of timeline? As you guys look at success, obviously, the early numbers are strong and it's terrific. What is your thinking about how you frame this? You know, what's the marker of success from a timeline perspective?
So, Board Member Quazo, what we do is look at each individual school, because each school is starting at a very different place. Some of our schools, quite frankly, were starting at what I call or consider ground-zero level. Some were starting at a level that was much higher. So, depending on the individual school, that will dictate when those schools move out and transition back to the traditional network.
So, is it contemplated that as schools hit success metrics and move out, then you will move new schools into the program and just keep refreshing?
Absolutely.
And just, the math scores were obviously up, but we didn't provide P professional development support on math? Is that how?
We did not. We started with literacy first, of course, because that's the foundation for everything. If children are struggling with reading, it's very difficult to really be successful in the other content areas. So, that's where we started first, but then we will continue to move forward with the math.
I'd like to add there that despite the fact that our focus was on literacy, individual schools, all of the schools actually in OS4, recognized the significance and importance of mathematics. They didn't put it on a back table and not pay attention to it as well. So, I think we're seeing the corollary effect of paying attention to a school and providing the kind of supports they need where all academic achievement moves forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Basically, not a question. I want to commend Barbara for taking on this program and selecting who I consider a great educator to lead this program. I've been out in the schools with her, and I want to say that I just want to commend you on your approach to the schools, recognizing that they're all individuals and not expecting everybody to get to the end of the race at the same time, but expecting them to complete the race. So, I want to congratulate you on your approach and the success that you've had in such a short time. It honestly warms my heart, because what it says is what I have been saying and some of us have been saying. If neighborhood schools are given the support they need, they will succeed. So, thank you for thus far proving me right.
Thank you, Dr. Hines.
And the rest of us. So, I can say I told you so.
We know you're always right, Dr. Hines. It's okay.
99 percent of the time.
Jesse?
The jump from 50 to 54 on on-track, is that something that you're projecting in terms of, are there goals for increases that we have each year? Are we pleasantly surprised each year and not necessarily having targets for where we're expecting this to go?
So, each school has a set of performance targets in which we're looking at, and where their starting point is and where we hope them to end up. And again, it depended on each individual school. Some schools surprised me and outperformed the targets that we set for them. Some schools did not. But when we went back to have deeper conversations, we found out that issues range from just an issue in terms of inputting the data to the fact that with some of the schools that they did not have an appropriate intervention mechanisms in place to support students to get them back on track.
Are those targets mutually agreed upon with the principal?
No, they're not. So, they are defined by us, but we sit down and really talk to the principals and the school leadership teams about what the targets are, how we came up with those targets, and how we will support them in meeting those expectations.
I would like to add there, in many cases, Jesse, and they were, the targets were set by our office, there was little to no pushback. As a matter of fact, some principals and some of the teacher leaders As a matter of fact, some principals and some of the teacher leaders who were there actually said, "Oh, we can do a lot better than that." They've reestablished or recalibrated the targets for themselves to move forward.
Could you just, Tracy, could you just also talk a little bit about the type of intervention you undertake when you see targets not being met?
So, again, depending on what's happening in the school, what we do is, we look at the quantitative data first, but then we also do, conduct regular school walkthroughs. So, we have a team of individuals who work in my office who conduct regular school walkthroughs, because that qualitative information is so important in informing our next steps. And depending on what the issues are, that really defines what we will do next in terms of our action steps.
Other questions for Tracy? Thank you very much, and congratulations on a great start.